...for May 22, 2019. Welcome everyone. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board, and if I could ask trustee Banducci to read the mission statement.
Since we're all talking about being an experienced group during executive session, let me get my grandpa glasses on to read it. Mission statement: North Idaho College meets the diverse educational needs of students, employers, and the northern Idaho communities it serves through a commitment to student success, educational excellence, community engagement, and lifelong learning.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, and we have several guests tonight, which I'm so pleased to see. My dear friend Judy and Steve Meyer are here. We're excited about that. Her whole crowd of friends are here, including former Senator Mary Lou Reed. Welcome. So, we will go on to the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes? Hearing none. I will adopt the minutes as written. We have no one signed up for public comment, and so we're going to start off with celebrating success. Gregon Stanley, the Cardinal Central Enrollment Services Center.
Thank you very much. Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues, and guests, thank you for this opportunity to introduce our celebration tonight. It said on your agenda that Peg Blake would be doing that. It's obvious I'm not. Peg would like to be here this evening but wasn't feeling well today, so I have the opportunity to step in, and it's truly an honor to introduce to you a familiar face you've heard from before, Dr. Teresa Borrenpoel. Teresa, the last time she spoke with you, I believe it was about the NIC Connect program, where we were working with the high schools in Region 1 to take our services out for those high school students transitioning to North Idaho College. In this last year, Teresa was given a different assignment, and that is to be the manager of our Enrollment Services Center, Cardinal Central, that you're going to hear more about. I hope you had the opportunity, possibly when we were lining up for commencement over in Lee-Kildale, to get down there and see the center a bit. I suspect you'll see some pictures of it as well. But I really want to note, and I know Teresa will share some of those names and some of the successes with you as well, but it's not only what you see on the front side of that center in terms of what they provide to students in a one-stop shop where they can come and meet with our ESAs, our enrollment services associates. Thank you. But it's also the people that continue to work in the back offices that are really a lot of the strength behind that operation as well. So, people you see up front, people you see in back, and the combination of those have provided a level of service for our students that's really phenomenal. We've improved dramatically the services that we provide to prospective students coming in, continuing students continuing on. So, it's with great pleasure and great pride that I introduce to you on behalf of Cardinal Central, Dr. Teresa Borrenpoel.
All right. I almost feel like we should applaud.
Hello, members of the board, and President McLennan, as well as our distinguished guests. It's a great pleasure to be able to be here to talk to you today about our new Enrollment Services Initiative, Cardinal Central. So, if you remember, as Gregon just elaborated, I was here last time to talk to you about NIC Connect, which was a recruitment program where we went into Region 1 high schools to ensure that students had everything that they needed in the high school to go through the Enrollment Services Program. It was efficient, it was seamless, and it was designed with service excellence in mind for our students. And I'm very proud to tell you that we are doing the same thing for our current students at North Idaho College with Cardinal Central, making their process seamless, efficient, and designed for service excellence. So, Cardinal Central is a one-stop service center where students can navigate the enrollment process and tend to the business of being a student. We have combined the point-of-contact functions for the admissions office, financial aid, registrar, and student finance into one convenient location for students. So, if you had entered Lee-Kildale Hall before March of 2019, you would have found three enrollment services offices that had windows that opened up to the hallway and one area where students would have to open a door to go into a service area. When students were unsure about where they were going, that obviously made the possibility that students wouldn't come to the office at all. Or if a student stopped by one of those offices and found out that they had to go to another office, we gave them the possibility of walking to their car instead of walking to the next service area. So, that's why it's so important to have this service area. When, I'm actually going to show you a quick photo of what those service areas looked like. So, this is actually a photo of the student finance window, and I took this photo today. So, during that time, it looked a little more student-friendly. There were pamphlets out, and there was stuff on the wall, but a student would stand here in the hallway to talk about maybe a balance that they had on their account or setting up a payment plan, which might be something that you would want to do with a little bit more privacy. So, for 10 years, Enrollment Services at NIC has dreamed of moving toward a one-step function, and with the hiring of Dr. Peg Blake with the Cardinal Central Initiative as one of her specific charges, we have done just that. So, I'd like to instead welcome you to Cardinal Central, our new Student Services Center. This is our lobby, and this space was formerly the registrar's office. So, if you haven't been in Lee-Kildale for a while, this is Room 116, just by the south entrance. And we took out the hallway interface, as you can see, so that students could come into the space and allow them to feel a little bit more engaged with the process. So, another view of Cardinal Central. So, Cardinal Central is staffed by Enrollment Services Associates, or ESAs, and these team members have gone through over eight months of training at this point, really, really impressive folks, and they are trained to help with approximately 80% of the issues with admissions, financial aid, student finance, and the registrar's functions. And each team member is actually trained on all four areas. So, if a student comes in and they need to talk about financial aid, they're not waiting for the financial aid window to open up. Anybody can assist them, which is a fantastic opportunity. So, like I said, our goal is to complete 80% of the functions in that front space, but there is some stuff that they just need to have elevated to our specialists in the home office. However, we don't send the student to the home office, we have the home office come to the student. So, once again, we're not giving students that opportunity to walk to their car instead of getting assistance with that office. We're actually bringing our associates from the home offices up to the front to assist. So, this is a little bit dark. This is actually a video I'm going to show you in just a second, because I want to tell you a little bit about some of the experiences that we have for students. So, it's really important that students feel like they are a part of their process, and they feel like their time is being respected. And so, we have invested in a software called Q-List. And Q-List allows us to develop virtual lines for service instead of having students queue physically. So, instead of having to see a line snaking down the hallway, students actually get to check in. They can either check in from home before they arrive, or when they get to our center, they can check in at the kiosk. By typing in their name, it puts their information up on a board, and as soon as it's time for them to come to the front of the office, there's a bell that rings, and it calls their name up, which is kind of cool, because they can sit down and relax while they're waiting. We have USB chargers on the wall, they can charge their cell phones. This is especially handy, let's say, during the beginning of the school year, when our lines are probably going to be 15, 20 minutes long. Students can check in, go grab a coffee, and then come back on time to go up to meet their person at the front. So, this is just a point of view. So, the students, excuse me, would pop in, they would type in their information. I embarrassingly misspelled my last name with a correction here. And then, they could provide us their student ID and their date of birth, so we can look them up. And then, there's a list of options there. I'm going to click that I'm just here to ask a question, and then I can go sit down in the furniture. But with this video, I show you quickly that my name now appears on the board, and as soon as the person is ready to greet me, all of a sudden, there's a ding, and it says, "Now serving Teresa" at Station 4. So, then I can go over to Station 4 and meet with my Enrollment Services Associate. So, it respects our students' time, and it also makes it so that as an Enrollment Services Associate, I can finish the work I was doing with the student before, before I call up So, another important function is the computer bay. If a student comes to us and says, "Hey, I'd really like to apply," or "I need assistance with my financial aid application," it doesn't make sense, we want to help them in the moment. So, we actually walk them over to these computers and assist with whatever function it is that they need help with, so that they don't leave without something being accomplished. These computers were actually granted to the financial aid office through the NIC Foundation, and they gifted them then to us to be able to provide service in Cardinal Central. So, it's kind of fun to see that gift from the NIC Foundation go from that one small office to a larger office with a little bit more use for all students. And then, finally, a huge piece of this office is, once again, this is our front area. You can see a little door there in the back. That is where our Enrollment Services Associates have their desks. And when we are at the front office, we try to do everything uninterrupted. When we're working one-on-one with a student, we don't want to be answering the phone, we don't want to be answering emails, we want to be present with the student. But behind that door, you will find, the phone is ringing, emails are being answered, documents are being processed, all in real time. And so, our team is housed back there, if they're not up in the front, working feverishly to make sure that students that aren't face-to-face are still getting that same fantastic service. So, as Gregon noted, this would be impossible without a huge amount of partners from across campus. Specifically, the Enrollment Services team has really congealed around this huge project. We've been working on this for about 18 months now, specifically the leadership of Tammy Haft and Stephanie House, Ellen Crabtree, Jessica Grantham, huge in helping us shape what this was going to look like for the customer service that was now coming into our space as opposed to being in those individual offices. We could not have done this without IT, we could not have done this without facilities, without our marketing team, without our campus leadership. It's been a huge push, a huge pull, and we are so proud to now have been open for just about nine weeks. So, please feel free to come visit us. You can drop by unannounced, just pop in, or check into Q-List and let us know you're coming.
Thank you so much. Board, questions about this trustee Banducci?
And I'll ask you to forgive my ignorance. I'm not, no, that's not how I want to ask it. How does this integrate with the new Joint Use Facility, or how do they work together? I'm not sure I understand where the handoff is or how that works exactly.
Yeah, so there's a fair amount of history there. When we had first started talking about the Enrollment Services Center, and that goes back to that 10-year timeframe, we thought about having this specific center over in the Joint Use Facility, and that took on a little bit of a different vision, and it's much more about that transfer piece. So, we're still working on some of the larger pieces about the possibility of housing an ESA over in the Joint Use Building that actually rotates among our team as well, so that we have those services at the very front of our campus. But we can also talk to students about what it means to transfer amongst the NIHE institutions. And the great thing about that is, since we, if that's what ultimately happens, that's kind of what we're exploring right now, then when we're trained up on the NIHE transfer information from the Joint Use, we're also talking about that here in Lee-Kildale Hall with our students that we're interacting with. So, it's not the same vision that we had 10 years ago, but I've been in multiple meetings, and we're working on some service-level agreements to see what we can work out to have one of our team members over there delivering that same service at the front of the campus.
Thank you.
Of course.
Trustee Howard.
You know, enrollment can be a very intimidating thing for some folks. It's confusing sometimes, and it's obviously time-consuming. So, this is a great program. But one of our huge, big growth areas is dual credits. And I guess I'd like you to see if you could describe for me to the extent to which you're involved in helping the dual-credit students coordinate their schedules with the high schools, which gets to be a problem. And if you're not doing it yet, is there a plan going forward to try and address that issue?
Yeah, we work really closely with dual credit. We did stop short of putting dual-credit functions within Cardinal Central, but dual credit is just up the hallway from us, so we work with them a ton. I had five students today from a North Idaho high school applying for their dual-credit applications in our office this afternoon. So, we work with it a ton. We process all of their paperwork in our home office, and then when students call and want information about the process, we help them. One thing that we stopped short of is providing advising information for either dual-credit students or really general population students, because we don't want to interfere with that relationship between the student and their advisor. So, we work with them a lot process-wise. When it comes to which classes to take, we leave that up to our trusted dual-credit team, and we definitely keep in close contact with them.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, it's a wonderful presentation. We got to see just the outside of it when we were lined up for graduation, and it looks spectacular. I'd love to go over and see it in person.
You're always welcome.
I'll work on that. Thank you so much. Great work. Well, Board, we have a very big crowd tonight, and I think they're here to listen to us talk about policy. I'm not certain they want to drag on for hours on policy, but we do have an agenda item that we might want to move up. Trustee Howard.
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion with regard to Tab 1, the second reading of the emeritus status, the nomination of Judy Meyer. I really wanted to make a motion to put that at the end of the agenda, so everybody's stuck around. But I was outvoted, so I would like to make a motion to move that up to the next item on the agenda.
Yes, she still has friends on this board, yes. All right, you have a motion. Do we have a second to move that? Second by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
So, we will move that up. It's our next order of business. Now, after this emeritus status presentation, there will be a short reception. President, where is that going to be held?
Shannon, where's that?
Right across the hall. So, we would ask all of you to take a few minutes and join us at a short reception, and then we'll reconvene the board meeting. So, with that, trustee Howard, would you like to begin on the second reading of emeritus status for our nomination for Judy Meyer?
Yes, do we have a motion pending?
I don't think so. I better start with that.
Well, I'd like to start by making a motion.
Yeah.
That we grant to Judith Santa-Meyer the status of emeritus and in that status as the first emeritus trustee for North Idaho College.
I'd second that.
Second.
All right, you second that. All in favor?
Well.
Oh, go ahead. Under discussion, thank you. I'm too excited about this to do it right.
Do you want me to read this?
I would like you to read that. Thank you.
There, Judy's been around for a long time at NIC.
Maybe I don't want you to read it.
Yeah, right. But I think that we all ought to recognize that not only has she served NIC, but she's served the state in many capacities. She's on the State Board of Education, and she was president of the State Board of Education. She's been in community service with Blue Cross, board, and hospice, the regional library, and public TV. She's been recognized by two university president medallion awards for education excellence and has been involved as a successful business owner and operator with her husband for 37 years in this community. She's served a total of 22 years with NIC. I mean, let that sink in for just a moment. 22 years she's served this institution. Thank you. Through that 22 years, she's helped manage balanced board budgets and at a time when we were having a 46% enrollment increase, dealing with budget problems, helped develop the dual-credit program that is growing by leaps and bounds, quite frankly, with regard to local high school students getting associate's degrees sometimes before they get their high school diplomas. Selected, helped select three different presidents, and has been involved in the development of professional technical education, supported the K-Tech project, and continued to produce, help produce athletic teams with additional funds. She was intimately involved in the development of the new Health and Science Building, which coincidentally is called the Meyer Health and Science Building, and as she and her husband have contributed to that. Steve, she's strengthened partnerships that NIC has with Lewis Clark Community College, or State College, and with the U of I, and was involved in purchasing and development of the education corridor, which is growing every year. She's been in, helped us be in a close relationship with Cootenay Health with our educational programs, and helped us get a $3 million grant to start a new aerospace industry training program, as well as being intimately involved in the development of a Parker Technical Education Center. So, Judy has been involved in so many things and has been such a big part of NIC that it is our great pleasure, I think, to have her be the first nominee, and now after this motion, the first emeritus trustee for NIC.
Thank you. And after we vote on the motion, I will ask her to come forward, and then you can read the resolution. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Judy, would you come forward? You can bring your wonderful husband, if you'd like, and come up to the, if you would come right up there.
Right up here?
Right there. Look into the camera. Okay, we will continue. It's going to be a while.
Do you want me to read the resolution now?
Yeah.
All right. Resolution of the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College, Cootenay County, Idaho, to approve and bestow the designation of trustee emeritus upon Judith Santa-Meyer. Whereas, the North Idaho College Board of Trustees pursuant to North Idaho College Policy 2.01.09 may confer trustee emeritus status and privileges therein to exceptional former North Idaho College trustees in recognition of their contributions to the institution. And whereas, there has been presented to the Board criteria for nomination of Judith Santa-Meyer. And whereas Ms. Meyer's dedicated service as a fiscal steward for North Idaho College has been demonstrated as follows: Effective management of annual budget, balanced budgets through an era of 46% enrollment increases, purchase of the former Stimson Mill site for future college expansion, and designation of a capital improvement reserve fund that enabled the construction of the Parker Technical Education Center and expansion of the delivery of career technical education programs. And whereas, the Board desires to recognize Ms. Meyer's tireless efforts in the areas of educational excellence and student success as demonstrated by the following: Development of a popular dual-credit education program with local high schools, the growth and improvement of computer-based learning, and a $3 million federal grant to establish an aerospace education program. Whereas, Ms. Meyer has demonstrated her high regard for our community in the following manner: Her strong support for the local high school district's creation of the Cootenay Technical Education Campus, her close relationship with Cootenay Health and partnership in support of expanded healthcare education programs, and strengthened educational collaboration with Lewis Clark State College and the University of Idaho. And whereas, Ms. Meyer's 22 years of service on the North Idaho College Board of Trustees are marked with a distinction, a passion for creating meaningful educational pathways for all learners, and an unwavering commitment to help North Idaho College achieve its highest potential. Be it resolved by the Board as follows: Judith Santa-Meyer is designated trustee emeritus of the North Idaho College Board of Trustees. The Chair of the Board is hereby authorized to execute, and the Secretary of the Board is hereby authorized to attest this resolution. This resolution shall be in full force and effect and immediately upon adoption, passed and adopted by the Board of Trustees of North Idaho College, Cootenay County, Idaho, this 22nd day of May, 2019.
Judy! Yes! Judy, we would love to hear from you, Ms. Meyer.
Well, thank you. There's not much I can say, except none of this would happen without the support of all of you. Thank you for recognizing me. But it's more importantly that the professional folk who are here every day making it happen. My joy will be to continue to support education, but I don't have to go to the meetings.
Well, would you please come forward? We have a little something for you. Mr. Secretary, or Ken, whoever. It says in there, "Secretary." You had to do all the reading.
Yes, right.
Actually, if the whole board would gather in the front, and Judy, if you'd be in the center. This way, Judy.
Let's go.
This is for you. This is the, yes, this is what Ken just read. Wonderful. Thank you. And then, the secretary has a little something else. It's parking pass. Pass to all of the events. Oh, wow. So glad you're here. So welcome, sir.
Thank you. I think part of my favorite thought is one that we've talked about before, the Sufi blessing that says, "From you I receive, to you I give, together we share," by this.
Okay, let's go have a. All of us. All of us. Thank you. Welcome back from the reception for Judy Meyer. Now, we get down to business. That was the fun stuff. So, the first thing we'll do is our constituent reports. Asnick, Paul McLeod. Paul, this is your first meeting. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, President McLennan, and guests. It's wonderful to be here. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak before you today. It's a great honor to be here representing the students of NIC, and I have had the opportunity to get to know the new Asnick team, and I am incredibly excited. I have great faith that this team is going to accomplish a lot of great things, and I'm looking forward to standing in front of you and telling you all about those great things. I'm incredibly excited about this year and the incredible opportunity that we have. In the past month, that new Asnick team has had the annual training day. This gave the new Asnick team the opportunity to get to know one another and talk about our goals and ideas for the fall and spring. In an effort to give dual-enrollment students a voice on campus, we have gone through the process of hiring a new dual-enrollment representative. We interviewed several candidates and have selected Abby Stilke for this position. With our dual-enrollment population growing, we saw this position as central for having adequate representation for all students at NIC. And in addition to hiring a dual-enrollment representative, we have also began hiring for the Student Events Board. We hope to have at least one or two students begin during the summer to start preparing for our events that will be right at the beginning of the year in the fall, like the Day of Welcome. The previous Asnick team wrote up a resolution regarding the in-district tuition, and if it's all right with you, I'd like to read that for you today. Would that be all right?
Certainly.
Great, thank you. Whereas, tuition has been on a consistent rise because of multiple increases in district tuition over the past few years. Whereas, tuition serves as a large barrier that keeps students from attending North Idaho College. Whereas, NIC has been conservative with not increasing taxes over the years. Whereas, the college focus is on retention and recruitment, not raising tuition, is sending a clear and strong message to students that we want them at NIC. Therefore, be it resolved by the associated students of North Idaho College that we do not support the increase in in-district tuition, but instead support the increase of the tax rate. And that's all I have for you. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak for you today.
All right. Trustees, any questions for Paul and the resolution?
No, it was a great resolution that you read to us.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Staff Assembly, Kathy Sparks.
Good evening, Chair Wood, trustees, and President McLennan. Staff Assembly had a short meeting in May. We handed out nomination certificates to each Staff Assembly member that had been nominated for the Staff Excellence Awards, and there were 17 people that received nominations, so that was pretty cool. We also had an electronic election, and so our new officers, Tom Green will be replacing me as Chair, and I'd like to introduce you to Jeff Davis. He's the new vice chair. And we have Sarah Martin, who will be the secretary, and our new senators are Liz Atkinson
Good evening, Chair Wood, Trustees and President McLennan. Staff Assembly had a short meeting in May. We handed out nomination certificates to each Staff Assembly member that had been nominated for the Staff Excellence Awards. And there were 17 people that received nominations, so that was pretty cool. We also had an electronic election. And so, our new officers, Tom Green will be replacing me as Chair. And I'd like to introduce you to Jeff Davis. He's the new Vice Chair. And we have Sarah Martin, who will be the Secretary. And our new Senators are Liz Atkinson, Steve Kurtz, Angie Rios, Heidi Schrader, Alethea Carpenter, and Claire Honsinger. We also received a report from President McLennan. And we also received a report from Melissa Maweni from Meet and Confer. And that was our meeting.
Great. Board, any questions for Kathy? Well, thank you. And Jeff, thank you for coming to the board meeting. What? And you came to the board meeting? Did you get some cake, I hope? Happy birthday.
Jeff, they missed me singing to you earlier.
Faculty Assembly, Joe Jacoby.
Good evening, Chair Wood, Trustees, President McLennan, honored guests. Thanks for the opportunity to share what we've been doing this month. Our first order of business was holding elections, so our new Faculty Assembly Chair is going to be Chris Pellchat, who is fairly new to NIC, but I'm really excited. He's been coming up with a lot of fun ideas and been a big help in a lot of areas. I think we're gonna have a really good experience, so... And then I get to not have to skip rehearsals and things like that, so... But it has been a lot of fun getting to come and see you all every month. And trying to compete with Grayden, of course, in the Thai Department. And tonight, I think I won by default. Brian Haniford is going to continue as Vice Chair of Faculty Assembly. And in our wisdom, Gerard Mathis was absent during the meeting, so he was nominated Secretary, Treasurer, and he was unable to actually fulfill those duties, so we're still in the process of figuring that part out. But that will be figured out by fall. Chris Martin came and gave us a report on the 360 evaluations, which was quite helpful. Thank you for your time, Chris. And then we had a resolution ourselves that was, I'm gonna be having to paraphrase this just a little bit, but we wanted to have a resolution to the effect that we support the Meet and Confer policy. It's an integral part of shared government governance, and that we value the Meet and Confer Committee's inclusion in the budget process. And that came about simply because there was a submission by Meet and Confer, and then we didn't hear back from, in a very timely manner. And nobody was terribly thinking anything nefarious was going on, but just wanted to say, "Well, we wanna..." We understand that this was kind of an unusual budget year, because you had such clear direction from the state. Both of them. But we felt like this is an important issue in terms of shared governance, so we wanted to share that resolution with you. And that was the end of our meeting. Do you have any questions for us?
Board, any questions of Joe? Well, it's been a pleasure, Joe. And Kathy, this is your last meeting, too? Oh, my gosh. Well, it's been very nice to work with both of you. I'm sure you'll just come to the board meetings for fun, right?
You know, it is... Yes.
And Chris, thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. And really, I very much appreciated you this year.
Thanks. And Senate, is it Ben Tishida? Did I do that right?
I'm afraid not, Madam Chair. But I can gracefully say that you are the, in a long list of people who have failed. You are not the first by any means, and you have consistently hit it incorrectly. It is Tishida is the correct pronunciation, so... Madam Chair and members of the Board, Senate met last week. We held elections as well. I am the new Chair, taking over for Jessica Adams. We thank, thank her for her wonderful service this last year. She did an amazing job. I hope I can fill her shoes well. We also elected Leonard Lambert as our Vice Chair, Gerard Mathis as Parliamentarian, and Lisa Kellerman as our Recording Secretary. After that, we had two, two policies that we had for a second reading that we did pass. That was the copyright and intellectual property policies and procedures. Those are now forwarded on to the President for further review. And then we also had the initiation of policy, policy, that you'll hear more about from Jessica later. That was, there were two updates from the President and the President's Cabinet that we accepted. So, that was our meeting.
Great. Board, any questions for Mr. Tishida? Ned, well, thank you so much. And Jessica, thank you for your service as well. Okay, that takes us to our President's Report. Dr. McLennan.
I just have a brief report this evening. I want to add my appreciation again for the constituents' leaders who served this year, and welcome the new crew in. I think everybody's gonna be well-served. And I look forward to keeping the communication lines open and, and working together to fulfill the mission of the college. I want to also extend my appreciation to everybody, especially the Board of Trustees, for their participation in last week's commencement ceremony. We had a lot of people there. And I think it's probably one of the largest cohorts of students going through graduation that we've seen in, in some time. I have received, different than in prior years, I've received unsolicited thanks and appreciation and congratulations from community members who either saw video of it or were in the, in the audience watching it, students who participated. One of the consistent messages is how, I hesitate to, no, I'm not gonna hesitate to say this, how wonderful our speakers were. They just did a terrific job. And I gave Grayden a hard time leading into this about the length of his comments, and I was actually wanting 30 minutes more, so... But, but it was just a great day. The rain, you know, did kinda overcast a little bit, but it was just, just a, it kinda brings home and reminds me again, every year I go through it, the sheer joy of watching each graduate come across the stage. And you could just see the, the sense of accomplishment, emotion on their, on their faces as they came through. It's just very, very gratifying. And so, thank you all for being a part of that and getting to experience that. And that was the last in a line of pretty special events throughout the celebration phase of our academic year, you know, starting with GED graduation, which some of you were able to, to join us for, the Adian penning ceremony, the dual-credit family breakfast, and all of the, the employee appreciation and awards breakfast that preceded commencement. We do a pretty good job, I think, of helping all of our, members of our community be celebrated along the way to their achievement. And it's just so wonderful to see all those accomplishments. Speaking of accomplishments, you may have read in the paper and probably already know that we took the Women's Softball Championship for the NWAAC again this year. We did that last year. We did it again this year. It's a lot of fun to watch that. Our Men's Golf, also, they're a three-peat. They, this is the third year in a row that they've won. So, that makes three championship athletic teams when you add our Men's Basketball Team this year.
They need a round of applause for that.
And then lastly, I just mentioned, I sent a note out, Shannon did, I believe, on the I-90 Corridor Aerospace Expo that is being hosted in Coeur d'Alene at the resort next week. Their opening reception, I think, is Tuesday evening. Trustee Dunlap, I know you're planning to come, but I just wanted to make sure the Board knows that you're, okay, great, that you're invited to be there for, for that. And, you know, that event is really grown. The, the number of participants, and we share that with Spokane, and, and our role in the aerospace industry is really highlighted at that. One of the neat things that's going to happen there, you, you're aware that we received a special grant, there were only 10 in the country, from the All-In-Her-Hounds Hands Foundation, which is the foundation for the band Metallica. And the basis of that, that award was for the machining, manufacturing aspect of our aerospace program primarily. And so, the, the lead for the Metallica grant nationally is coming because, coming to the conference, because, I said there's only 10 of them in the country, but interestingly, two of them are located in the inland northwest. Community Colleges of Spokane and North Idaho College were two of the recipients for that grant. And so, they're gonna come, and we're gonna showcase some of that at the conference as well. So, look forward to that. You certainly are invited, and I know that you can touch base with Shannon if you need more information about that. That concludes my report.
Questions for Dr. McLennan? Trustee Dunlap, I think you had your hand in some of that aerospace stuff at both colleges. So, it's gonna, it'll be fun to go to that with you. Well, under your report, you did not mention one thing that I wanted to make sure you knew about tonight. Mayor Steve Whitmire was going to come tonight under public comment and issue you high praise for the tour that you gave of the North Idaho Mayors of the Parker Technical Center. He was so pleased with that, all of them were. I know you got a lot of feedback from that tour. They were all enthralled with it. And you bought them lunch. That always makes them happy. And so, he wanted to come, but he's, he's judging some senior projects tonight. But he wanted to be sure that you knew that he was just so grateful, and he's just, heaps a lot of praise on you and your performance here.
I sincerely appreciate that. What I, what really afforded us was an opportunity to get in front of the Region 1 Mayors, of which I had, I really, and I'm ashamed to admit that I didn't really realize how many Mayors there were. And these are a lot of folks that, in really small communities, gave, before the tour, had about 45 minutes to share and answer questions about the role of North Idaho College in our region. And it was such a wonderful connection to have all of these elected officials, they were interested. They wanted to know more. And we've made a commitment to connect with each of them with our leadership team to find out ways that we can look at serving their communities, make sure they understand, you know, there were some interest in, well, how do we get Parker Technical Education in my community? And, you know, we talked through some of the...
That's not a tax...
Some of the, some of the constraints there. But, you know, there are some things that we can do. But it was just a great information exchange, and it was a great opportunity, and, and it worked out very well. So, thank you.
Great. Wonderful. Okay. That takes us on to our Meyer Health Science Expansion, Expansion update. And I'm gonna ask Chris Martin to, to do that tonight.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, just a quick update on the Meyer Health Science Expansion Project. This is moving forward really, really well. We've completed the initial programming. This included many, many program faculty from the Natural Sciences Division, as well as leadership from that division, as well as some program leaders from Health Sciences. So, the programming is complete, and we're moving into schematic designs. There are four sessions planned over the summer, where we'll sit down again and meet with each of those faculty members and, and the division chairs, and develop the schematic designs to drive the building, so that when faculty come back in the fall, we can start the process of making sure that we heard them correctly through the programming, that we've captured all of their needs. The other things that are happening at this point in time are a full review of the existing drawings of Meyer Health Science, so that we can connect the new facility as well as we possibly can. And again, find the efficiencies that we, we had planned on with the mechanical strength that's already built into that building. So, that's what's happening right now. In the next few weeks, you'll see Geotech, some surveys. And again, a thing that we're really worried about right now and focused on is, there's a lot of utilities in the corridor between the sub and Meyer Health Science. So, we'll be working with our utility partners just to make sure that we're aware of where, where those are as we continue moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris? Yeah, Trustee Howard.
Probably more being reminded of things that I've forgotten. But, could you kinda bring us up to speed on where we are on the budget on that? I mean, I know we approved a partial budget, but we didn't approve a final building budget. And where are we on the, the budget that we approved for the planning or whatever?
So, we, you are correct. Trustee Howard, you approved the chance, the opportunity for us to move into design for that facility. We are still negotiating the final budget with ALSC. There were some questions about the lab consultants that have been brought in on this particular project, but we're almost there on finalizing that contract with ALSC. And at this point, all we're doing is the work around the Geotech survey, the surveys, and then the programming piece, pending the final resolution of the contract with ALSC.
So, my, my recollection is, though, that we didn't budget or approve a specific amount for that investigation and the preliminary. Are you gonna bring back to us a budget proposal for the planning portion before we move to the construction portion?
Chair Wood, Trustee Howard, absolutely. So, we're finalizing that right now with ALSC. And before we would come forward for construction, we're bringing the plan. We're working with Trustee Dunlap and Trustee Murray as the liaisons in that process as we get closer to what the actual price will be, making sure that we're in line before we bring the project budget back to the Board.
Thank you.
Great. Other questions for Chris? Well, Chris, while you're on a roll, we can all notice the Joint Use Building coming right along. Do you want to talk about that for a moment?
Absolutely. That's a really exciting time, a real high point right now. So, I did make a couple notes before the meeting this, this afternoon, because we are almost there. And so, currently, right now, we are on schedule for substantial completion on May 31st. Furniture's being delivered on June 1st. And we have a date for punch list of June 6th. And so, this is coming together really, really quickly. You'll notice that the parking lot project is complete minus the striping. The landscape is going in at this moment. The glass doors were put in today. That was the final glass element that was needed. And so, that is happening really, really quickly, and the sod will be going in hopefully before the first day of June.
Wow. Very nice. Okay, thank you. Oh, Trustee Dunlap.
Could we, as the Trustees, have a tour of that building sometime in the near future?
Do you want to do something before the next board meeting?
We can certainly arrange that. I haven't, I've missed every tour that we've taken through there, so I would like to join you on that. I haven't been myself, so...
Chris, is it okay if we go in there?
We're, we're almost in there where you can go without a hard hat. We're getting really, really close. We're happy to set that up, and I'll work with Dr. McLennan's office, and we'll get that scheduled, both individually or as a group. We're happy to make, make that tour happen.
Perfect. Great. Thank you. Okay. That takes us, we've done Tab 1. We're gonna go to Tab 2, Second Reading, our general fund budget for FY '20. Chris Martin?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, thank you for this opportunity tonight to come before you with the Second Reading of the FY 2020 Budget for the College. Just a couple of quick comments, if I may, just to set the stage. We talked about this last month, but a couple of key points to remember. The planning assumptions for this budget included flat enrollment growth for our traditional four-credit students going in the next fiscal year, with a planned increase in dual enrollment of 5% enrollment increase year-over-year. We talked briefly last month about the changes in state funding and how that impacted the college, and that there was an overall net decrease in state funding year-over-year. The budget that was presented at the last meeting also proposed a 1% tax levy increase, and a $2.50 per-credit increase for in-district, and a $3.50 increase for non-district. And that really brings us to the discussion tonight. The Board requested that we present several scenarios when we came back, so I'd just like to walk through those briefly and then open it up for questions.
Thank you.
So, this is actually on page 2 of your packet. The scenarios that we were asked to present included the removal of in-district tuition, additional half percent increase to base salary for employees, a 2% increase to part-time faculty and staff, and a reduction, or, excuse me, an addition of 1% to the property tax levy in exchange for the tuition. Happy to walk through any of the impacts here and have further conversation, but at this point, we'd be happy to stand for questions.
Well, there are a lot of different scenarios here, and I know we all have different ideas in mind. Maybe we're similar in some. I don't know if there's a motion to start us off for discussion?
Yeah, I, I think we need to make a motion on the overall budget.
Okay.
Then, any amendments.
Alright.
I would make a motion that we approve the fiscal 2020 institutional budget.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Discussion?
Okay. Now, I would like to make a motion to amend the proposed budget to remove the in-district tuition increase of $2.50 per credit hour, and replace that revenue with a 1% property tax increase.
Second.
Okay. I'll have a motion in a second. Discussion? So, I'd like to discuss that. So you, you've chosen just Option A, and then the, an additional 1%, which is
No.
So it would be a total of 2%.
Yeah, my understanding is that if we, and I could be, stand corrected, but if we remove the in-district tuition increase of $2.50 per credit hour, that that could essentially be replaced, from an income standpoint, with a 1% tax increase, property tax increase.
Correct.
All right. So I'm just, my motion is to offset the tuition, removing the tuition increase with a 1% property tax.
But that would be a total of a 2%. Because the 1% is already built into the budget proposal.
Correct.
All right. Well, so, I want to talk to you about that. So, I want to just talk with you a little bit about that. So, the in-district tuition increase, what is your philosophy behind that?
Well, I kind of support the students' resolution that was presented to us tonight, but I think, based historically on the fact that we have, over the last four or five years, essentially raised tuition almost every year, and we have not raised, we've been pretty good stewards, I think, of our responsibilities to the community in terms of not raising property taxes. And if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, those property taxes that we have not taken, which could fall into the category of forgone taxes, I guess, we have the largest pool of forgone taxes, I think, of any agency in the county, which just illustrates the fact that we have been pretty good stewards of our responsibilities to the community. And so putting a 1% tax increase this year to help the students out with their educational expenses, I think, would be an appropriate balance that we should maintain between property taxes and tuition.
Okay. So, what I recall, and Chris, you can help us with this, there was a five-year span where we didn't take any increase, and then I think the last two years, we did a 1%?
We did a 1% in FY '18.
Okay.
We did not do one last year.
Okay. So we have been really mindful of increasing taxes. And you did give us the breakout here that an additional 1%, I think it's $2.86 a year, to a homeowner with, that has a $400,000 home. So that's kind of a higher-end home, too. So, oh, thank you. So I don't disagree with assisting the students, if we can, because every year, we have said, we want them to definitely have a piece of the pie, that this is, we have to share the burden, but I think they have consistently. And so maybe this is the year to, to not give them that additional burden. The other thing, though, Ken, that I would like to see, you left out the half percent increase to the base. I'm interested in that, because we don't exactly have any other mechanism to keep us from falling behind in the market, and a half a percent to the base is very small. Most entities are doing, you know, 1% and 2% to the base on top of a step increase. And so I, if we're not able to do much, at least want something. And what I would propose, the 2% increase to part-time faculty and staff, I know that was Trustee Vanducci's proposal, but what I would say about that with our adjunct, as much as we value them, we did give a raise last year. And the feeling from the administration that I've talked to is that we're probably at market. And so, since we did a 2% last year, I don't think that we need to do another one this year. But what I'd like to do is propose we spend about, probably $40,000, $45,000 in lieu of this, and we do a salary study, like we've committed to in policy. Last year, we set it aside. And so if we took those funds this year, built that in, instead of doing that 2% raise to adjunct, then we would have, we would include them in the salary study. And next year, at this time, we'd have a better idea of where we're at. So those are my counterarguments.
Well, my, my motion to amend was just with regard to the tuition increase, and offsetting it with a 1%
Yeah.
Property tax. I expected, quite frankly, we would go to the other elements after we dealt with that, so we got each one that we deal with separately.
Oh.
So.
Okay.
So my motion is basically to increase, to remove the tuition increase of $2.50 per credit hour, and increase the property tax by 1% in order to offset it.
Okay. We have a motion and seconding more discussion, trustees? Trustee Vanducci?
Well, if we're taking this one at a time, I support the removal of the in-district tuition increase. I guess we're not talking about the base issue yet. We're not talking about the part-time faculty and part-time staff yet, I'm guessing. And so, but I do oppose the tax increase. So, I just want to be clear when I can talk to which. So this is just tax increase and just in tuition, in district tuition, correct? That's all we're addressing at this moment?
Correct.
Well, I guess that's my comment. I would not like to see taxes increased.
Do you have a different proposal on how to pay for the removal of the district, in-district tuition increase?
Of our existing funds, to be honest. And even worse, I did promote, again, I've carried this, carried the water for this for years. I know, as I say, Joe can attest to, because he's commented back to me several times over the years about the part-time and the, so, the adjunct. So I'd actually probably increase our bill a little bit even. I think we have the funds. We're in a central no-growth environment with our enrollment. We may be down, we may be static, maybe we may be somewhat positive. We're poaching our future a little bit with the dual enrollment increases, because it doesn't, it pays us a fraction of the amount, especially with our, the model, the paradigm that we exist under, where we try to put as many, you know, guys, people in the seats here on campus, you know, and we're trying to move more of that from remote. So, I just find it hard to justify that we're raising taxes or tuition at this time. I think we've got to just tighten our belts and live within our means and our budget. That's just my opinion.
So, the budget, as you've got in front of you, the only way to pay for what you're suggesting would be that we fund it out of our fund balance, which would be an ongoing thing every year, or we dip into our capital improvement fund, which we have set aside for capital improvement. So are you thinking about one of those on how to fund this without a tax increase?
I am, I am. I'd like to see the update on our balances. I know we've got a reserve, a substantial reserve, so I'm not opposed to, we tapped into it, about $400,000, $500,000, I believe, last year.
We did.
We would be even less this year, but that might just be the short-term transitory price we pay for business, and we just may have to do that.
Trustee Howard?
Two things. One, I forgot to mention, I suspect, is that one reason, another reason why I think we should relieve the students of the tuition increases, we should be reminded of the fact that they recently had an increase in fees because of the Student Health Center, so that those essential expenses that they have every year have gone up considerably. With regard to taking it out, any, any money out of the existing, either Capital Improvement Fund or Reserve Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, I think, we've, we've made a proclamation anyway, that we're gonna reserve that for capital improvements, and to start getting into that fund at this stage, I think we'll just erode that commitment. I would be opposed to that. With regard to taking it out of the general fund, we're predicting a flat enrollment this year. There's a lot, there's always some guesswork involved in enrollment increases or decreases, and, and that's kind of what that fund is for. If our projections on enrollment are wrong, and it's, if we still have a decrease, then we're gonna have to get that money from someplace, and we'll have to come out of the general fund, because the budget will have been passed. So, I don't want to do that now. I think the prudent thing is to, if we remove the in-district tuition increase of $2.50 per credit hour, we should find a way to pay for it right now, and do that out of the property tax increase of 1%.
If I may?
Yes, Trustee Vanducci.
With all due respect, Ken, I'm probably the last guy that that's a good argument to make to, since I voted against the Student Recreation and Wellness Center, because I knew that $100 was gonna be on top of it. So, to have now say, oh, gosh, we gotta do it this way, because we just burdened the students with the extra $100 bucks, or they burdened themselves, at the, at the encouragement of the staff, senior staff, and a lot of folks. I'm the guy, I'm the worst guy to make that case to, because I go back and say, we should have never built that in the first place. I think it's a boondoggle, and it is an extra burden on the students, and I think that reduces our flexibility regarding tuition. And, and so, we're right back to the argument I made a couple years ago, before we voted to build that thing. And I did not support that. So, now here we are, and you just used that as just part of the justification of why we can't do this. Well, that tax, that burden shouldn't even be there, in my opinion. So.
So, I'm confused. You just said that you don't want to increase the student into
I don't, at all.
Okay.
And I don't think we should put the extra $100 bucks on them either, or themselves, or however you want to, however you want to say that came about.
But what I said at the time was, keep in mind, students, that we wouldn't be able to take that into consideration when we're looking at your tuition. So, we're all somewhere all over on this thing. So.
I would like to call a question on the amendment.
I have a call for the question. I had a little more discussion.
Oh, well, go ahead.
Okay. I have a question for Chris. If we did not, if we took a 1%, which was proposed, and I'm sure it's somewhere here in this option, but you can say it faster than I can find it. If we did, the 1% that you've proposed, rather than a 2%, and we did not increase in-district student tuition, what would be the amount that we would have to pull out of our reserve?
$135,464.
Thank you. And that is an ongoing cost, but last year, we took about $500,000 out of the reserve.
That's correct.
Right. Well, Trustee Howard, I think that we can accomplish both. If we did look at our reserve fund, which is, it's not in peril at the moment. That's a doable amount at $135. What are your thoughts on that?
It's $135, and it's gonna go on every year, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna have the income support from it, from the tax increase. I think the way to support it is a 1% tax increase that goes with it this year.
Well, we're already getting more money because of the new construction. See, that's the thing. We're already getting a windfall because of the, new construction, which is increasing. There's so much more additional new construction. I don't know if Chris can project that, or what they're saying on
It's on here, the new property tax on the rolls.
Yeah, because I mean, I live in Post Falls. I mean, I have, I have a lot of tradesmen that are clients of mine, contractors, plumbing contractors, general contractors, HVAC. I mean, every single guy that I have that's in the trades right now is so busy. I mean, they're overwhelmed, landscape, you know, guys doing sprinklers, whatever. So, we're gonna keep getting more money, the way, at least the way the county is growing at the moment. So, it's not static, so we will still be increasing, and we've already banked that increase, in addition to asking for the tax increase.
I think what always comes to mind with me is, when we talk about, if we take a 1%, we take a 2%, it's a small amount of money over a year's time, $2.86 more than what people are paying now, which is fairly low. I think we're like $50, $60 a year for most people. But what I keep in mind is, every other taxing entity is going through this right now, and so those $2 add up a little bit when you put us all together. And so, I'm trying to look for a reasonable solution. I like the idea of holding the students harmless this year, but maybe we do it through our reserve fund instead of that additional 1%.
Trustee, I do appreciate that you pointed out that it is additive. There's an aggregate amount of tax increase, because there are multiple tax districts. I mean, if you went to the polls yesterday, there were water districts, there were highway districts, there was hospital district. There's all the districts and all the people that were being elected yesterday, and those are all taxing authorities within the county. Not depending on where you live in the county, you didn't see everybody on your ballot, but you could still see those that were directly affecting you in your, in your tax. A question I have for you, you said you talked to administration and talked to some folks. Talk to me a little more about that feedback regarding the part-time and adjunct faculty, because that's one I'd be willing to let go. If you feel very strongly, if you sense that there's a strong feeling that we're where we need to be at this time this year, but I'll be honest, if we exclude them again next year, I will, I will raise the issue again, though, because I, I don't want them to feel short-changed, or truthfully, just unappreciated or unloved. I'm just gonna say it that way.
Well, I'll tell you what, since we're gonna take these one at a time, I will absolutely come back to that. But we'll finish with Ken's motion.
Okay. I know, I just wanted to throw that out there, since it sounds like we're trying to negotiate a little bit here.
Well, I think we are. But I, he's called for the question, and so, all in favor, do you want to repeat your motion, Ken?
Yes, removing the in-district tuition increase of $2.50 per credit hour and replacing the revenue, revenue stream with an increase of 1% local property tax.
1% in addition to the 1% proposed?
Yeah, 1% is to offset the tuition.
Okay, I get you. So it's a total of 2%?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I could, just so, for clarification, just so I understand the motion. This is a motion to adopt the FY '20 budget as proposed, but with the changes to remove in-district tuition and to increase the tax levy by 1%.
No, the motion, the motion to adopt the budget as proposed has a second, and my motion is an amendment to that.
Okay.
Okay, Mark. So, it seems like it's too compartmentalized, and how do we get back to wanting to address these other things in the budget if we pass that?
You make a motion for an amendment to the next item on the list.
We can do that, or, or, again, just keep in mind that the Robert's Rules of Order here that we're using here is, by policy, is a guideline. So if, if the board can agree on what they're, or at least can articulate what they think is going, going to be something that is acceptable, then we need to eventually state one motion
Okay.
To pass the budget as described, as you all, at least a majority of you will agree to.
With whatever amendments we pass in the meantime.
True. I, I, Ken, I don't know that you need to do the amendments. I mean, that, that's a way to do it. It's just, it's sometimes difficult to follow from
Well, it just allows us to address, there's like five different amendments that all may not pass. And so, I'm
Understand.
I'm trying to do them in a way that we all have an understanding of what passes and what doesn't pass.
Okay, so, so what is up right now is, is an amendment to the proposal. Just, just, we're only voting on the amendments for the removal of the tuition.
Correct.
And, and the
And an additional 1% property tax increase.
Right.
Yes.
So, all right, but we will do other amendments, I anticipate. All right. So you've called for the question. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Nay. It passed.
There's two, two?
There were three.
Do we have three? Okay. All right, motion approved. So then, I want to make a motion of an amendment to the budget, to your amendment, right?
No.
No.
To the, to the budget.
To the budget. I would like to propose the additional half a percent increase to the base, and I'd like to propose that in lieu of the $78,000, or Option C, we look at funding a salary study that we put into policy, and then next year, at this time, we'll have a really good data piece to look at when we look at salary. And I'd like the president to speak to adjunct faculty and where they are in the market right now.
I'm not sure I understand your motion.
Okay. Part of it was discussion. I'm making a motion to increase half percent to the base, and on top of that, fund a salary study, I'm gonna say approximately $40,000 salary study.
You want to do that separately, just in case?
Okay.
One fails and one doesn't?
Yes, I do, thank you.
Okay.
I make a motion for a half percent increase to the base. Do I have a I make a motion for a half a percent increase to the base. Do I have a second to my motion?
One second.
Okay, discussion. Trustee Dunlap.
Madam Chair, when you talk about a half increase to the base, is that in addition to Letter B, which already has a half a percent to the base as an option? Or are you just reiterating that singular half percent?
Do you want to clarify the-
So, Chris, you want to explain that first box because I think that's a little confusing. That half percent is not in the budget as proposed.
Right.
Correct.
So, what you see there is just a math formula of what's reductive or what would need to be added to the budget to cover that.
So, it's, so-
So, if you pulled out, in A, if you pulled out, which we have, in-district tuition, we've got $135,000 challenge absent anything else. If you add an additional half a percent increase to the base, you've got $137 challenge absent anything else. Now, you've taken care of part of that with a 1% addition to the, to the 2%-
2%.
Making a 2% total on the property tax. And then you, the math grows a little bit more if you add the 2% across-the-board increase to part-time faculty and part-time staff at $78,000.
Thank you.
And, yeah, and so, all of that adds up to an amount, some of which has been partially taken care of by the additional 1% property tax.
So, what I want to do, like I said, is I don't want to erode that base so much that years down the road, we're having to do a large increase just to be at market. I would like us to address it every year if we can, and I think this year we can, especially with that additional 1% that you all just passed. That's more than enough to cover the tuition, so. Any other questions on my motion?
Well, we haven't commented?
Yes.
All right, I've got a couple of issues then, or comments. I took the time to review this year. I've got the Your Employee Benefits 2019 that are effective July 1st, and I have the separate 2019-2020 Employee Benefits Rate Sheet here. So, I can see the medical, I can see the dental, I can see the vision. I can see on here, in addition to that, they've got the life and accidental death and dismemberment with UNOM. They've got the voluntary life, long-term and short-term DI, EAP, the Aflac, this is supplemental. I look at the, I look at the benefits and then what we're talking about and the wages, salaries. Two things jump out at me, and then part of this was actually some input from a couple of faculty. One is, it's a very generous benefits package in addition to Percy and everything else. So, we sometimes forget all the components of the compensation package. And I think with the 2% that we've got, I don't think we need the extra half percent to the base. Secondly, this is already a process that is a little bit skewed. If I have someone that's either under their wife's employee, employer's insurance, or I have somebody that maybe is retired from another line of work to desk coverage or something like that, and say they don't exercise the ability to have health insurance, then that's a $1,200 benefit potentially for unemployed plus one that they're not utilizing. So, there's an imbalance there that some employees are being compensated more than others. And so, why don't we have some sort of cafeteria plan or something that balances that out so that all employees are treated equally? You know, right now, it's kind of a use or lose, and so, you've got some employees that are being able to take full advantage of all this, and then others, because of their different circumstances, either can't or don't choose to because they don't need to. So, there's a couple of things about this, just in the benefits anyway, about how maybe we can restructure it anyway to be more equitable across the board to all employees. And, but again, I don't support the half a percent base increase either.
On the cafeteria plan, Todd, I think that's something we should look at in the future. I know that other entities do have that to make it a little more equitable, so that's maybe something we can discuss in the future. I would actually like to ask the President, you've had, you've met with Meet and Confer, and if we could afford, if we don't do the part-time faculty and staff, what is your thought about the base?
So, my recommendation would be to add 1% to the base in this budget cycle. Since you have already added the 1% to the property tax, take care of the removal of the tuition challenge. We did not add that into the budget at the front end of it because doing so would require us to draw from fund balance for an amount, not at the $500,000 last year, but I wanted that to be a very upfront conversation with the board. We would then remove that again from the budget activity next year and seek to balance the budget without using fund balance. But to the extent that we have fund balance available that we could use next year for some other priority, we would, you know, possibly look at that then. And I don't, somewhere in here, I have the math of what that would cost, but-
For a 1%?
What I, Chris, do you have the number? So, absent the part-time, with the addition of the 1% and the tuition coming out, the difference in what we would require to do the, from a half percent to 1%, I see the total down there as-
It's $136,910 is the difference between the half and the 1%.
Okay.
And, Chris, with that additional now 2% increase that's been voted on, would that cover, without going into the fund balance?
It will not.
It will not. So, what would the difference be?
If we, if we do a 1% increase to the base, the cost is $273,000. We have approximately $17,000 additional income currently in the budget with the 1% removing, excuse me, removing the tuition and increasing another 1% property tax.
So, we're short about-
We're short about 100, excuse me, about 260.
Quarter of a million, yeah, over a quarter of a million.
Okay. Okay.
For the one, for the full 1%.
For the full 1%, okay. So, that would require us going into the fund balance. So, I, I'm going to respect the opinions of the trustees and leave my motion intact.
I can do the math.
You did, yeah, okay. For a half a percent because it keeps us from going into the fund balance. And I think that's where the comfort level is, if I'm reading the board correctly. So-
It will still require going into the fund balance.
But not to that degree, yeah. So, I'm going to call for my motion.
Let me ask a question before you.
Sure.
I guess I'm inclined, I'm inclined to not know what to do about this motion. Last year, I had asked for a salary study so that we had a comprehensive look at how competitive we were. And I think I missed a meeting and we voted not to do the comprehensive study. And you've talked about maybe reinstituting that. I would like to know where we're at before we start increasing the base, and I don't have any sense of that in terms of where we're at competitively. And I think that's an important ingredient in terms of making these decisions. Having said that, I suspect the half a percent increase is not going to make a big difference in the long run. But I do think in the future, as we vote on these base increases, that we should have a sense of where we are in the competitive world of education.
I guess I base it off of CPI that, you know, CPI of this region, I think, is at 1.5, Chris, is that right?
I do not have that current number. I apologize.
I believe that's, I guess I need to verify that, but I know it's more than a half a percent. And so, and that information's readily available. We probably should have had it here tonight.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
And it's, and it's cumulative over each year. That's an additive percentage. And so, you know, you could make a case for doing much more than 1% without a salary study at this point. But we know that if we're not maintaining that or paying attention to it as we go forward, we're going to be back in a position of paying catch-up with our base. And where it really, where it really impacts, it impacts us in two ways. Somewhat at the top end, but the top end, you could make some argument that the top end of our salary scale are benefiting at the top end of the salary scale, and they've gone through the steps to get to that spot. One of the, one of the adverse effects that we have is at the bottom end of the scale, and where our entering and our starting salaries are placing employees as, in a competitive work environment. So, paying attention to that base becomes important in recruiting people to come and work at North Island College. And so, we do, and I think a salary study will help us be more certain about that, but we do know we need to do some maintenance on the base.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll call for my motion. All in favor? Aye.
For the half a percent?
For the half a percent.
Aye.
Aye.
Are there? Did you want to vote?
Say aye.
All right.
So, we have-
We have four. Mr. Banducci, did you want to weigh in?
Nay.
Nay? All right. Motion carries. The next consideration would then be, do we want to fund a salary study for next year? Trustees, any motions on that? I'll make a motion that we would fund a salary study to begin in the fall. Would that be appropriate? We're looking, who are we looking for?
Yes.
Begin in the fall? Last year, we thought it would be about $40,000.
The actual amount that we had, and it was also coming out of fund balance, was $26,000, I believe. But we did, that was a very conservative-
It was a very conservative.
Conservative amount. We know we were going to need to add to that at some point.
All right.
So, I, Chris, is $40,000 a good starting point?
Trustee McLennan, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Karen Hubbard for a lifeline on this one. So, the 45, 40 to 45 is a much better option than the 20.
Okay, I'll make my motion, 40 to 45,000 for a salary study. That would include adjunct. And so, that next year, when we're talking about adjunct, that we're very clear of where we're at in the market. And so, that's my motion. Do I have a second to my motion?
Second.
Second by Trustee Dunlap. Discussion? Trustee Banducci, you had a question about adjunct. Now's probably a good time for that. Dr. McLennan, can you talk a little bit about our adjunct and where they are in the market?
Aren't we going to vote on the 20, the money for the study?
Yeah, but under discussion, Todd wanted to talk about adjunct because this, this study would fund them as well.
So, I don't know that I can talk specifically to adjunct salaries. I don't have the knowledge or the information about that. I think more a general comment about the part-time salary increase is it's, we have a board policy on step increases for full-time employees. We've never had, the, the board hasn't had the discussion, does that, you know, do we want to add now part-time employees at all levels to that automatic step increase? That's another question. When we look at part-time salaries, part of it is the variability in part-time roles, not just part-time faculty, but other part-time roles. And it's a, you know, it's market-driven and it's, it's depending on the, dependent on the role that you're asking somebody to perform. And so, there's a lot of variability. We may be, have just complete adequate funds in the majority of our part-time resources. We don't, we don't, they're, those are easy to set up or down within the budgeted amount of the total part-time salary pool. So, if we find that we're not able to attract a certain type of employee for something at a, at a lower salary level, part-time salary level, we can make adjustments to that without doing anything with, and across the board increase. The part-time faculty rate is a, is a different issue because it is tied a little bit more towards some other things, including full-time faculty participation in overload activity and, and the value that's attached to that, that, that work effort. So, but we don't, I don't have any knowledge of exactly where we are in the marketplace with that. Maybe others do in the room.
Well, once again, I'm the guy that's been singing the song about differential for the harder to place, whether it be in the STEM or CTE or nursing, to no traction for the last several years.
Last year, we gave a 2% increase, Todd, to adjunct.
No, no, that's all I'm talking about.
There's no traction.
No, I'm talking about what Rick addressed.
Okay.
About being able to, sorry, I was addressing what was said by the President, which was part of his explanation.
Well, in the motion I've made, it would cover part-time faculty so we can really do a market-driven study. And then when we come back here next year, I would imagine that we will have some good discussion and we have real data in front of us.
Yes, but there's still the challenge of a differential, to be able, be able to pay teachers differently, more off the grid, if you will, literally and figuratively, for those that are specialties that are harder to fill. Normally, those fall into the STEM areas of study, CTE areas of study, which encompasses nursing also. So, the ability to have differential pay is still something I think needs to be addressed, but it seems to be such a threat to some that it's not something we can ever really put on the table. I, I still challenge that there are some areas of study that are easier to fill than others with instructors, without compromising quality or with compromising quality.
So, that's a totally-
But we can't seem to have that discussion, but that would still be part of-
Yeah, we need to have that discussion separate from, from this discussion because it's a standalone item. But I did hear the President talk about adjusting in the areas we need to.
That's where I was addressing right there, was the differential, the ability to differential.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So, my, I want to be clear, my adjusting was not in the, on the issue of differential pay for faculty at any level-
Okay.
-part-time, full-time, or otherwise.
That's what I thought, that's why.
That, that is a different policy question, and some institutions are dealing with that in some creative ways. And I'll tell you, with, not without some disruption in the institutions where they've, they've gone in those different directions. That's not what I'm talking about. What I am talking about, though, are different part-time roles from, whether it's a part-time groundskeeper to a part-time librarian to a part-time IT help desk person. Those are roles that can be differentiated based on, on the positions and, and the supply of labor in those particular, you know, we can make adjustments with our, within our existing pool of part-time resources to be variable there. But I'm not suggesting any variability in the adjunct faculty rate.
Good clarification. I will, I will say that, it's been several years ago now, right before Trustee Dunlap was President, we did a salary study addressed specifically at part-time employees because our feeling on this campus is that we should pay a livable wage. There shouldn't be anybody, whether it's a groundskeeper, whatever area they're working in, our commitment was to a livable wage. And at that time, we knew, we had had the study, we knew what a livable wage was, and so, I'd like us to get back to that again, make sure that we're doing that. And so, again, my motion is that we fund a salary study next year in the amount of, probably not to exceed $45,000, and it would cover our part-time employees as well. I had a second from Joe. I'm going to call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Point of-
Okay.
I'm sorry, point of clarification?
Yes.
When you say cover part-time, you're talking about in the study?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Trustee Banducci, did you have a vote?
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries. All right, so, anything, we have more to talk about on this budget, if anybody wants to dig in. I just, we've passed it, but I still had, wanted to make just a comment about the fees that I noticed, and maybe I can get an explanation. Some of the fees, they are what they are, but, oh my gosh, can they be really high, especially with the helicopter people? And I assume that that's all about the vendor.
Madam Chair, members of the, of the board, we're currently not offering that program live. It's on the books so that we could if we had potential enrollment, but that is actual seat time in a helicopter. It covers the fuel, it covers all those aspects. So, it is, it is a hefty fee, but it is in-flight training.
Okay. All right. And then, I had one other question. There was, I want to say it was the mountain biking. So, their fee went up by about $40 because of transportation costs, but then when you looked at all the other, like scuba diving or all the other little things that we do, their transportation costs didn't change. Why did mountain biking change for transportation cost? This, I'm trying to find them. They seem to be the only-
It's on page- It's on page.
There they are.
Seven of 10.
And so, I just know, I thought, well, why did theirs increase in, for transportation costs, but nobody else did?
PE 110W.
Okay.
And the fee went from $395?
Yes. To $4 something.
To $4.80. It's a $40 increase for that particular program.
So, and it would look like it was due to transportation costs, but all of the others didn't seem to have that.
So, Madam Chair, I'll have to get back to you with that. We picked an evening when Dr. Burns was not able to be here and she would be more able to probably explain that specific fee than I am. I'm happy to provide an answer for that. But there is a $40 increase in that particular course.
And then, just in general, the fees, of course, the nurses too, their fees are horrendous. But student loans and scholarships and all that, do they address the fees fairly well?
They do cover the course fees, so they can be used to cover those expenses.
Okay. All right. That's all I had. Board, any other questions on the budget?
We had, I don't know if Todd wanted to make a motion on his request for 2% increase on part-time employees and adjuncts. I know we've discussed it, but that's still on the.
Okay.
To what end? I don't think there's support for it and we're already short the money, so.
Okay. I just.
More to our will, so.
And it's my understanding that there's still going to be a need for a fund balance transfer.
Yes, sir.
Given the changes that we've talked about, do you know what that amount is so we can put that in and vote on it?
I have it calculated as $181,910.
Say that again, please?
$181,910.
So, you think we need a motion on that?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Did you want to make that?
Yeah, I would then make a motion that we authorize, as part of the budget, a fund balance transfer in the amount of $181,910 for fiscal year '20.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Question.
Yes.
And that's from the college reserve, not the capital reserve. Is that correct?
Correct. Yeah.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I could offer one suggestion, a not-to-exceed amount, because as we calculate the final tax for the 1%, there may be some variance there. We may not need the full 181.
So, you want the motion to read a fund balance transfer in an amount not to exceed $181,910?
Yes, sir.
Right, that's the motion.
All right. And second by trustee Dunlap?
No. Murray.
Oh, sorry. Trustee Murray. All right, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Okay. Motion carries. All right. Anything further on the budget? The overall budget, so we didn't do that?
No, we have to do that now.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve the overall budget as amended?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Motion carrying. Thank you for all your hard work on the budget this year. It's never an easy task, but you do a good job of breaking down the information so that we can see all the options and make the decisions. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you. And I would be remiss not to mention, there's a lot of people behind me who helped do that. So, the team in the Office of Finance and Business, led by Sarah Garcia, want to just thank them for their hard work. Thank you.
Yeah, always. Yes. Thank you all. All right. Takes us to new business, tab three, first reading, action, revised policy 2.0104, Jessica Adams.
Chairwood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues and guests, thank you for having me here to present on the proposed revised policy. This is a policy that I have spoken to you guys about throughout the year in my Senate reports. To give you a brief background, before I answer any questions that you guys may have, since it is your first reading, this proposal all started with College Senate forming an ad hoc committee to review the idea of forming a committee on campus that would be working on helping policies get regularly reviewed and revised. And that's where that started. We felt as though, instead of creating a brand-new policy, why not use one that we already have and improve it from there? When we were adding it to the, this policy in front of you, we realized that a lot of questions we get from campus is about the proposal process as well, not just the governance process of approving the policies. So, we added in the proposal revisions to outline who on campus can propose revisions, deletions, or new policies. So, that's the bulk of the revisions in this policy is adding that verbiage on those across campus who can propose those. And then, also, the ad hoc committee for reviewing policy. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. Board, if you had an opportunity to look over the policy proposals, it's first reading, but do you have any comments on the proposal coming forward?
I have one.
Trustee Banducci.
More of an observation, but I actually see the words I finally like. I use, I talked about it in the executive session, I even talked about it today, but participatory governance, that's the proper terminology. It's not shared governance. We have this notion and it's incorrect, but in paragraph one here, you actually use the terms participatory governance. That is more accurate. So, glad to see that.
Thank you, Chairwood. Trustee Banducci.
Any further comments, board? All right, Jessica, we will come back at second reading if we have, oh, yeah. Maybe one.
Well, I have a question. On the last page of the policy, where it talks about any constituent group, how do you define constituent group?
So, that is, and it's going from page two into page three about the recognized constituent group. So, constituent group on campus, sorry, Chairwood, trustee Howard, to respond to that. We have our constituent groups of the ASNC representing the students, the staff assembly representing staff, faculty assembly representing faculty, and then, we've got president and president's cabinet. And so, we wanted to ensure that those proposals are being routed through a recognized constituent group. And it may be a group that ASNC is working with. It may be a group of staff, faculty, administration, and students that are all working together on it. It's just wanting to make sure that it comes from the campus, not from an outside organization.
The only question that kind of came to mind was, that's with regard to proposals to create, revise, or eliminate policy and/or procedure. Can be made by any recognized constituent group, and I think there might be a student club on campus. Can they, as, are they a recognized constituent group? And maybe you ought to define constituent group in a way that holds it to those entities that you're describing, because I can see any collection of students or faculty or whatever that's not, may be recognized as a group on campus.
So, Chairwood's, trustee Howard, did you have a?
Well, go ahead. You finish.
So, that was a part of our discussion, but we would be encouraging that group, that club, because we did have a group of students on campus that joined with a department that then worked through ASNC on the process of bringing it to the Senate and to the president. So, yes, that's, we just want to make sure that they're being guided and that they're working through those constituent groups, because a club is absolutely under ASNC and within that constituent group body. And we would be working with fostering that development and encouraging them. And a part of that is because we want to make sure that they're working, if they're proposing revisions, we want to make sure that ASNC is connecting them with the policy owner, so that club is working with the policy owner on those revisions. Does that answer your question?
Well, it's an answer. I still have difficulty with the concept of a subgroup, if you want to call them that, of ASNC being recognized as a constituent group and therefore, being authorized by this policy to initiate, create, or revise policy. And I would think from your discussion that really you want it to be ASNC as the superintending agency to be the constituent group that is proposing the change, not a subgroup.
But they would be ultimately, because it goes through them, is what I'm understanding. But President McLennan wanted to clarify.
So, trustee Chairwood, trustee Howard, I think the point that you make about definition is just, it's a clarity point. And as we've had discussions about this, what is meant by recognized constituent group comprises three groups. There could be a fourth in the future if it were a recognized constituent group, but it's ASNC, faculty council, and staff council. So, we just need to define that, is what I think you're suggesting.
That's right. If that's who really is ultimately the only one who is going to be authorized to initiate these proposals, they ought to be named then in the definition.
And then, to further explain the other part of the comment, the policy owner, we are, that's a language thing too, or maybe policy originator or policy administrator. There's, you're not seeing procedures with this because there are a number of, so, how does, ultimately, if one of the constituent groups develops a policy idea or revision or whatever, it's still going to have, it's still going to have to go through Senate on its way through the governance process. So, to be explicit about that process a little more in the procedure, so you don't see those yet. We've agreed that we have work to do on those, and that'll happen probably throughout the fall to kind of narrow that down. But one of the key elements of that is to not have any group working through a policy without some coordination and communication with the policy holder, constituent owner, creator, whatever term that is, you know, that would be listed at the, you know, policy originator or author on the front, so that there's coordination and communication about that work that's happening on policy review, development, whatever's happening with the policy. But that work is yet to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Banducci.
Well, I was just listening to the definition of the constituencies, and to me, every individual student is a constituent since they're paying money for the services of the college. So, I guess if we're going to define every subset has to, a student subset has to all come under ASNC, then I guess that's the umbrella and ASNC has to speak for all, so.
It's their governance process and it's effective. They have a representative here, so. Okay, is that, is that it? Jessica, thank you. We'll see you with the second reading.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, we will, we'll add a definition piece to this to make sure that it's clear. Either we'll spell it out in the actual constituent groups that are, can do that, or we'll say a constituent is these entities.
Okay. Trustee Banducci, I'm looking for a motion to table, tab four.
I make a motion to table, tab four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll take that up at a later meeting. Tab five, first reading, action, 2019-20, board meeting schedule. Dr. McLennan?
Madam Chair, in accordance with Idaho Code, section 67-2340 through 67-2345, the Board of Trustees is required to adopt an annual meeting schedule for its regular meetings. The schedule is shown in attachment A. The schedule shown in attachment A is proposed to establish the board's annual meeting schedule for the coming year. As in the past, no board meeting is planned for July. Meetings are scheduled for the fourth Wednesday of each month, except as noted in the attachment. Any retreats and workshops will be announced and scheduled as needed.
Okay. It's our first reading. Any questions, Dr. McLennan? All right. We'll take that up next meeting. Okay. We have an action item, and this is a resolution, which we would like to honor our state board member, Don Saltman, who is retiring after serving, oh, gosh, has it been seven years on the state as our state board representative? I have it in the resolution. Anyway, we want to properly thank Don as we go to the state board meeting in June, and we'd like to do that with a proclamation from our trustees. So, what this is tonight is the proclamation, you've all had a chance to look at it, like the approval to present Don with this proclamation and thank him for his years of service to Idahoans.
Madam Chair, if it's okay with you, I just like, I'd like to make the motion to the following proclamation, but read the proclamation.
Please do.
All right. So, I'd like to move that the board adopt the following proclamation from the North Idaho College Board of Trustees, that whereas the North Idaho College Board of Trustees, in its capacity as a governing body for an institution of higher education in the state of Idaho, wishes to honor Mr. Don Saltman for his service to the citizens of North Idaho as a member of the Idaho State Board of Education, whereas Mr. Saltman has served the Idaho State Board of Education for 10 years, including two terms as president and terms as vice president and secretary. And whereas Mr. Saltman's leadership on the Idaho State Board of Education helped to guide the board as it considered public education policies and provided for the overall governance of public elementary, secondary, and higher education. Whereas Mr. Saltman has served the Idaho State Board of Education in 2013, when the board was instrumental in the implementation of the governor's task force for improving K-12 education. Whereas Mr. Saltman has volunteered countless hours of service on various committees and work groups in support of improving public education in Idaho, the University of Idaho Presidential Search Committee in 2013 and 2018-19, and on the governor's higher task force in 2017. Whereas Mr. Saltman's years of dedicated commitment to public education includes service on the North Idaho College Strategic Planning Committee, 13 years of service on the Lakeland School District Board of Trustees, four years of service on the state's Professional Standards Commission for Teacher Certification, and service on the state committee that developed the graduation standards in science for Idaho students. It is therefore resolved that the North Idaho College Board of Trustees honors Mr. Don Saltman for his dedicated service to the citizens of North Idaho as a member of the Idaho State Board of Education and his tireless efforts in the pursuit of educational excellence in the state of Idaho. That's my motion.
Great. All right. A motion, do I have a second?
Could I discuss real quick?
After you second.
Okay. Second.
All right. Discussion?
Yes. Don Saltman has a pet peeve with saying North Idaho, not Northern Idaho, and it might be valuable to put in Northern Idaho at the bottom.
Northern Idaho College?
No, no. Where it says, where to say it, citizens of North Idaho as a member of the Idaho State Board of Education, second to last line.
Yeah.
I would recommend changing that to Northern Idaho.
Second to the last.
So, that's one change.
Okay.
Don would be impressed.
Well, only you would know that.
Yes, I would.
Oh, and there's one at the top also.
Yes. So, if that's a, that's a motion to amend to say Northern rather than North, I accept that.
Okay. I need a second.
Second.
You can't second your own motion.
Wasn't mine.
Okay. All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We're happy to do this, and I'd like to thank Shannon for her work on this. She does such a nice job on these proclamations. Yes, please. Yes, please explain what will happen at the state board meeting.
So, our tentative plan at this point, and when you, when trustee Wood says, when we go to the state board meeting, the state board meeting is here, so we're hosting it in June. The evening, the first day of the board meeting, that Wednesday evening, some institutions, it's handled differently. Sometimes, there's a dinner. What we're going to be doing is a heavy hors d'oeuvre reception, outdoor reception, weather permitting, and it would be at that reception where we would, we would recognize, invite others to help us recognize Don and present this resolution to him at that event. And we'll do everything we can to get him to attend, so.
I think he has to. It's his last meeting.
Yeah.
So, good. All right. Very nice. Thanks for your work on that. That takes us to our board chair report. What I wanted to update the board on was a meeting that Chris and I attended with the. What I wanted to update the Board on was a meeting that Chris and I attended with the city council. It was actually a General Services Committee, and then last night I attended the city council meeting. Chris and I attended because the council is in process of trying to go out to bid on the grandstand project at Memorial Field. And as you know, our softball team uses the Memorial Field every year. And so we had a vested interest in that remodel and what they were doing. A year ago, over a year ago, we did commit a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to the remodel. We are about one-sixth of that project. Ignite, Cordillane, the urban renewal funding is paying one-point-two million for that overall remodel. But what had happened is when it, when it didn't go out to bid last year, in this economy, everything's going up, and we've all been in these shoes where construction costs are rising, and all of a sudden, you can't get your bids within the budget. And so they were over budget by a significant amount, about four-hundred-thousand dollars. So the city really had to do some, I guess, deciding on how they were going to pursue this. Chris and I went to the General Services meeting and expressed to them that we, we really want to see the project still move forward. There was some concern that they just wouldn't do the project at all because of the budget overruns. And we offered thoughts on how they might do that, if they needed to phase in the second portion of the project, which would be the NIC locker rooms and the restrooms, that put it in next year's budget, that we think that that would probably workable. Now, they were happy to hear that. They've been very considerate to us, considering we're only one-sixth of the project. They've seeked out our input constantly on this, of would it be okay if we tried to do this in next year's budget? They're not going to walk away from the project. They're committed to it, and so we thought it was appropriate to make some concessions. One thing that has changed through that process, everything was going to be put under the old grandstands. There was going to be the locker rooms, and the restrooms, and a concession facility built on there. But it is incredibly expensive to go under, what did they call, I think they called it into the jungle under that building, and try to do something new with an old structure. So they had a thought. The restroom across, right across the street in the city park is an old facility that they had in mind for destruction and build over again anyway. So what they have proposed and what they approved last night at the council meeting was they will demolish that restroom in the park, they will build a new one, and on that facility, they will build locker rooms just for NIC. We will be the only ones using it. There'll be a locker room for male and female. When we're not using it, it will be locked, it won't be available to anyone else. And so I think that they have made some significant concessions for us. And honestly, that facility serves more people being in the park than right there under the grandstands. So it seemed like a great workable solution, and they approved that in their budget last night. So that's for your information. Also, they talked about the cardinal on the building. They always give me a hard time about that. Sometimes they say it's going to be this big, and I say it's going to be this big. And so there will be a cardinal on that building. And so that's still ongoing discussion, but it'll happen.
Do we get a cardinal on the locker room also?
On the locker room door, yeah. Yeah, they've committed to that. But we want the big cardinal that was the floor of the basketball court. That's still available. Al's tracked that down for us, and so we're still working on that. Any questions on that?
Madam Chair, I'm going to sound awful cynical when I say this, but to move forward with the expectation that from now on ever, forever, that locker room will be devoted only to NIC athletics is something that I just don't believe will occur. I think we ought to get something in writing, if that's the promise. That that's going to be something that NIC can lock up and retain and have access to, because I envision that at time we'll bring forward other requests to use that area, and the city will accede to that, because they'll own it. So I'd like to find some way, if that's really what the promise is moving forward, that we have something in writing, that that's NIC's facility to use.
Well, I can talk to the parks director about that. I'm not sure how that will be received. They did make a verbal commitment, but I'll certainly talk to them about that.
I just remember going through the documentation on the dock, or the, excuse me, the dike, when we were taking down the trees and looking at all the documentation, and I mean, they still said it was our responsibility when it wasn't. So we have differences with the city from time to time, and I'd just like to see something in writing to memorialize our understanding.
So what, in that particular instance, Trustee Dunlap did some very good negotiations for us, and we came out very well. So, but I will carry forward your idea in a discussion format.
Thank you.
Any remarks for the good of the order? Trustee Banducci.
I was privileged to attend a couple of things here recently. One was the GED, adult basic education, ABE-GED graduation. We had quite a number of people walk in. Fular, Bozwell was quite full, and once again, they've done a great job, and a great event. The second was the nurses' pinning for the RNs. We just produced thirty more nurses to take care of all of us as we're aging. So I'm encouraged by that. It was quite, quite a group. Sounded like they just had done a fantastic job in the program. So a couple of other graduations, and then, of course, we had the dual enrollment breakfast, and how exciting was that? I mean, my gosh, we had over a hundred kids, if I understood that right, that graduated from high school and college simultaneously. And the sort of the irony there is they actually walked at our graduation commencement before they're able to graduate from high school, and we have to wait till we actually get their transcripts so we can formally confer their degree upon them, because of how the rules work. Unless you're a home schooled and you walked in the ABE-GED, and maybe you got your high school there.
Yeah.
So they might have been ahead of the game in that. But anyway, some really exciting things that happened, and encourage people, any of those graduations or events, if you can make it, it's, those are the ones, those are the good things to come to. Those are the fun ones.
They were, I totally agree. Graduation was wonderful this year, great, and I loved your speech.
You really did great.
I loved your speech. I really enjoyed graduation. And there was this really handsome red-haired boy that came across the stage, and his grandfather cut in front of me.
He moved, he moved pretty quick for an old guy, didn't he?
He did, he said, "I'm giving out this diploma." But that would be really fun to do, so.
That was a treat.
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, all right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you. I know I do.